Okay, I'd like to call the Thursday, September 17th, 2020, Virtual Regular Monthly Meeting to order. This time, I'd like for you to pause for a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by Mrs. Mrs. Allen. And I have a flag, so those of you can stand. Ms. Allen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Which stands one nation under God indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, Ms. Allen, would you please read the School Board Mission Statement?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll ask the clerk to roll call attendance, please.
Ms. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mr. Barnes? Barnes not present. Ms. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Ms. Schumake? Ms. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Parent?
Present.
Eight members present, two members absent. I'm sorry, seven members present, two members absent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval, Hans.
Hans moves for approval. Do I?
Second, Williams.
Ms. Williams seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, would you roll call vote, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the 2020-21 School Calendar Adjustment. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval, Patillo.
Patillo moves for approval.
Second, Allen.
Allen seconds it. Do I have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines? Ms. Hines?
I'm sorry, I've been on this thing all day. I forget that button all the time. Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
I'm here. The other raise here.
Mr. Barnes?
This was the agenda?
This is the calendar.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item of the agenda is Reverend Patillo. If you will bring us into a closed session, please.
Come on, Mr. Parent. My screen clicked off here.
I have the motion in front of me if you want me to pitch it.
Okay, you can go. I have it, I'm sorry. I move the board into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 8.1.
You've heard the motion read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion being second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Is that on?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Mr. Sluffer, we are now in closed session, so if you will make the arrangements for that, please.
Once again, folks, you'll have to unmute yourselves. Thank you.
Reverend Patillo?
I move that each board member certified to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in the motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, then I will... Let's see, where's Kathy? Kathy's not back in. I will then Reverend Patillo, I'll call him Reverend Tello.
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hines? Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Um...
Ms. Atkinson, yes.
Ms. Atkinson, oh, there you are. Ms. Williams and Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
And is Mrs. Schumake in yet? Okay. All right, we're back. We're now out of closed session, and we're back in open session. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce our student representative, Mr. Miles Hunt. Dr. Bracy and Reverend Patillo and myself had the opportunity to do the... to meet with him and do the orientation of the biologs and the procedures for our meetings. And it's my pleasure to introduce Miles. And I think you're going to have to unmute yourself so that you can... There you go. And so that you can speak to the board and really share your goals, because we were very impressed with your goals. So it's all yours, Miles. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patillo, Dr. Bracy, and School Board members. I am Miles Hunt, and I am pleased to be serving in this position, representing the students of Portsmouth Public Schools for the 2020-2021 school year. I must thank you all for your confirmation in both my appointment and the alternate student representative, Jayden Johnson. Although apart, we are committed to ensuring students are engaged and on track towards success and prosperity. It was Marion Wright Edelman, the founder of the Children's Defense Fund, that said, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." Through my experience, Portsmouth Public Schools, its educators and staff have successfully done that each and every day. In the end, that is what I hope to accomplish. And by hearing from students, addressing their concerns, and solving their issues, that goal is absolutely attainable. When we support our students without any reservation, they are bound to exceed expectations and effectuate positive change. Thank you all for your dedication to public education, and I look forward to our partnership.
Thank you, Miles. And we are certainly looking forward to you being our student representative. And it's going to be a little bit different until we, I guess, get back to normal. And I know that we've talked about how you're going to communicate with the elementary, middle, and high school, and you've got some great, great plans, so welcome aboard. Do any board members have any questions for Miles before we?
Chairman Parent, this is Board Member Atkinson. I just want to welcome Miles, and that was a great introduction. I mean, if you had a mic in front of you, you could have dropped the mic. So I was impressed by that introduction, and I look forward to what you have in store for giving us information on the student body of Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Dr. Nguyen, and that is the Monthly Report of the Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Nguyen?
Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patillo, and members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I am delighted to welcome you, Miles, first of all, and I'm also excited to give you the CNI Monthly Report. As you can see, the printed report is in your board docs, and that kind of outlines a lot of the activities that our teams have been conducting over the summer with pictures and details of that. In addition to that tonight, I want to talk about some of the things that have happened. We have been in virtual learning with our students for nine days. When we launched virtual learning, we outlined plans that we hoped would help make this a smooth transition that would help us to better understand what we're doing, and we own our truth in saying that this is new for all of us. As I spoke last month, I stressed that we needed to focus on communication, collaboration, and consistency, and that we needed to be flexible. In outlining the plan, I stressed the importance of that flexibility and helping us all to understand that this is a new approach for everyone, for teachers, for parents, for students, and for our school communities. So today, in our ninth day of school, I want to talk to you about some of the things that we've learned over the last nine days and some of the adjustments that we've made because of what we learned. First of all, we've received tremendous feedback from everybody: parents, teachers, students, our community, and even some of you.
Yes.
What we've learned is that we all are learning. And because we're all learning, we're willing to grow and we're willing to take what we've learned and try to make our practice better. So we made a few adjustments in our practice and in what we're going to be doing with virtual learning. We're going to add another C to that communication, collaboration, and consistency, and that C is compassion. We are going to be compassionate in our practice.
Thank you.
We recognize that parents are struggling with their schedules. They are struggling with helping their children, and that our teachers are also struggling too. So the first change that we've made is we're going to implement what we call the Flipped Wednesday. What that means is that we will have an asynchronous Wednesday where students will not be engaging in live instruction, but they will have time to work on their assignments, to interact with their parents, and for their parents to interact with teachers. In addition to that, our teachers will be able to collaborate better together. They will have time for planning. They will have additional time for professional development. And if need be, they can also engage more with parents and students. We will adhere to our schedule as outlined for the other four days where students will engage in live instruction with their teachers, and then the teachers will have time in the afternoons to have office hours and to engage in additional planning. Now, this will also address some of the concerns we heard this week from our parents who feel that their children are having to be online for longer periods of time than they expected.
Right.
Part of that, what we recognize is that some teachers... Because as you recall, in our recommendation with the master schedule, we suggested from the Office of Curriculum Instruction, the guidelines we provided were that teachers would be online for no more than 15 minutes with our elementary students, and most of the parents that we heard from were elementary parents. And some teachers indicated that the students were doing so well that they, in fact, did take more than 30 or 45 minutes to be with the students. So we are asking that teachers adhere to the 15 minutes and use the rest of the time to interact with students either individually or in small groups. And because we're now on an abbreviated synchronous day, that should also help parents with being able to maneuver that. Lesson plans were another area of concern for our teachers. We rolled out a virtual lesson plan template, and one of our departments, English, decided to go with a plan that they had implemented in summer school because they had received great feedback with it. While it didn't differ much logistically in the information that they were seeking, the feedback that we got from teachers led us to realize that it was more time-consuming because it's an electronic version of the plan and not a Word document. And because it was an electronic version, teachers were not able to cut and paste certain parts of it from day to day. We've since made an adjustment, and now teachers will receive a Word document for their English and reading plan that will hopefully take away some of the laborious and tedious work that they were having to do around that. With our technology, we recognize that there's only so much we can control. We did have some glitches with Zoom and some of our internet. And in recognizing that, even today, we saw some things with the weather. So we're going to try to be as transparent as we can with parents. And in instances where we know that there might be an outage or a power outage, we're going to give parents and students the option of working on a flipped schedule, which means that they can pull their information down or they can use the information they have and work from home since they may not be able to engage in a live session. The other feedback that we received was with Schoology. As you know, we launched Schoology this summer.
Yeah.
It was a very quick launch, but giving kudos to our instructional technology team, our technology department, our coordinators, our supervisors. We did a phenomenal job of rolling it out, and we continue to provide ongoing training. This is a learning management system. It is a clearinghouse that enables us to put everything in one place, and it merges our information with Power School. It is something that we plan to keep for the duration. And while it is somewhat difficult for people to embrace it right now, again, nine days in, we have to pack our patience. We have to be flexible, because once we real... Once teachers are fully trained and they're fully comfortable with it, it will be wonderful to have everything in one place. I want to emphasize here that we have gotten positive feedback from many parents also about Schoology, especially parents who have children in multiple grades in one household. And they really like the idea that they can go to Schoology and find everything for all of their children there. I wanted to share with you just one of the letters that we received, and I won't reveal who the parent is, but I thought that this was very positive and certainly reflects a lot of what we've been trying to do and what we wanted to capture with virtual learning. This parent writes, "I realize it's only been a little over a week, but I do have to say that there are many reasons why I love virtual learning. I realize that it can be challenging for most, and that's where we come together as parents, teachers, faculty, and we help one another. I have six children attending Portsmouth Public Schools, and I work full-time, and I'm blessed to have my husband help with the children's learning. I have children in first, fourth, fifth, and seventh grades. Middle school, I'm happy to say that for the reasons listed below, I love virtual learning. It's safer at home, especially with the history we're going through, and I'm kind of ad-libbing here. Recorded video sessions, we don't miss out on any information from the teacher and our children. We get to have a really big impact on the disciplining part of our children. There's better communication between teacher, student, and parent, and better interaction and bonding with our children." These are some of the pros about having virtual learning. And there are cons on this probably, in that both parents work, so it might be harder, but there are evening and recorded sessions. I would love to have my children do virtual learning for the rest of the year. And so I wanted to share that, because in spite of the challenges that we face and the feedback that we've gotten, we've also had some very positive feedback. And I want to say that I personally am very proud of how we have rolled out virtual learning. I know that we will continue to learn with it and through it. And I want to emphasize again that most of the time in public education, we rely upon research-based practices and skills. There aren't any... There aren't any research-based practices here other than distance learning and blended learning. And we're kind of pulling from what we do know and writing new things and doing new things. And I think our teachers and our administrators and our parents are doing a phenomenal job. So I would ask again that we continue to be compassionate. We continue to be flexible. We continue to learn and grow, and know that we are going to help each other, and we're going to get through this. Thank you.
Ms. Hines, I know that you sent an email, and some of the board members wanted the item on the agenda, and it is on the agenda, which I think Dr. Nguyen has covered. Did you have any other questions that you wanted to bring up?
Not to deal with instructions. She said it eloquently. She has basically... Her and I have been speaking the same tune. Anytime somebody calls, it's, "This is it." You know, there's one little sandbur that's in somebody's shoe, and it's not... It's not easily fixed. We are in all of this together. And so I just remind everybody, whether it's teachers, whether it's staff, whether it's parents, guardians, or even some of the students, that, "Look, we're in this together." And so when we had teachers and parents that were calling to go... You know, saying, "We have to do this five days a week." I don't mind doing it, but that is a bit much, like she said, for the working parents. You know, and both my husband and I are working and doing it with our son, too. So I just really wanted to have a discussion about what we could do for the morale, not only for our staff, but also for parents as well, who may be feeling overwhelmed in this. And so how Dr. Nguyen has summed it up and with the decisions that have already been made about the asynchronous day even before we got here, I do want to thank Dr. Nguyen and Dr. Bracy and their staff for looking at that compassion piece and looking at the logistic piece when making this decision. So for the other board members that chimed in about wanting it on the agenda, I'm satisfied, Dr. Nguyen, with... I hate to say this, "speechify," but with how you have put it so eloquently, being somebody that is in the teacher mode most of the day and has to do the parent mode and the teacher mode at the same time, how you have summed it all up is, to me, it makes sense, and it is very compassionate, so I did want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members want to chime in?
Chairman Parent, this is Board Member Atkinson.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a concern regarding two things. And that's the... To me, it seems like that would be an actual day off. Am I correct?
No, it's... The way I understand flipped Wednesday... Dr. Nguyen, go ahead and explain it. I don't see it that way.
And that is exactly the perception we don't want people to have. It is not considered a day off. Students are to complete work. It will be counted, because as you recall, we do use attendance to count... Use completed work to count for attendance. Now, what my office is planning to do, because we recognize that if we don't often give guidance around what that day should look like, not because people don't know what to do, but because we want to be consistent again, we are planning to give some guidelines for what an asynchronous day will look like for students and for teachers and for parents. It would not be... It is not a teacher work day. It is not a day off. Teachers and students will be working. And because it is on a Wednesday, we know that that will even give us more time, because parents in the middle of the week can work with their children to identify areas that they need additional support on, and they can get right back to it on that Thursday when they come back.
Okay, because, yeah, I was wondering, because my concern is for that latchkey child that does not have their parent in the home. And the perception around that particular day is that it is a day off. So will attendance be taken for that day? And will students be required... So students will be required to log in?
They won't be required necessarily to log in. Now, they do have the option of logging into Schoology to pull down their work or to see prerecorded sessions. In addition to that, I wanted to point out something else that we're doing, because one of the things that I've shared with my staff, and I shared yesterday in another forum that I was speaking, we have always focused on making sure that we provide support on every level for students, parents, teachers, and everyone. But you know, we've always been very child-centered, and we will continue to be child-centered. But what I've shared with my staff is that we're no longer just teaching students. We're teaching families. And so as a result of that, we have to broaden our perspective around what that looks like and how that impacts instructional practice and how that impacts our accountability. And so one of the things I've asked principals to do, particularly the elementary principals, is to make sure they engage their parent liaisons to work with parents and hold virtual camps so that parents will understand better how to support their children. We know that there are latchkey kids out. We know that there are children whose parents work during the day. Our teachers are parents who work during the day, and they have children who they have to support. And so they recognize that, and they try to find ways to support those children as well. But we want to employ our parent liaisons, our behavior interventionists, and our attendance monitors to make sure that they serve also to support children outside of the classroom perspective and give teachers that additional layer of support. I've asked principals to make sure that teachers are very engaged with parents and that they have communication regularly to address any times that children aren't engaging or they're not logging in or they're not completing their work. So we're definitely making sure that they understand this is not a free day. It's not a day off. It is considered a school day. It's what we call an asynchronous day, but we're calling it Flipped Wednesday because we're flipping the classroom.
I see you, Ms. Hines. I see you.
I'm still...
Are you finished?
No, I'm not finished.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so Dr. Nguyen, just playing devil's advocate, if a student does not log in on that day, what will happen?
Well, the teacher will contact the parent. Just as if a student didn't come to school, if a teacher... If a student is not performing work, we do the same thing we would do in a regular setting. You know, we don't have the benefit of in-person, but we do have the benefit of communication. And so we have a communication system in place where the teacher monitors the student's daily and weekly and quarterly performance. And so they would be the first person to reach out to the parents. And if we can't reach the student through that process again, we employ whatever strategies we have through the counselor, the behavior interventionist, the attendance monitor, social workers, whatever support we have, just as we would in a face-to-face situation.
Okay, and one more question. Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, and thank you, Chairman Parent. And this is to you, again, Dr. Nguyen. Regarding the curriculum that you said was changed, I know that Google Docs was used as a form of not only to collect data, but it was an accountability piece to make sure that the teachers are teaching the necessary components, such as the collaboration of vocabulary, reading, and writing. So how are we going to make sure, being that we're not using that Google Docs, that they are being accountable for teaching those specific lesson plans and reading?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean there. We have a pacing guide and a curriculum framework that outlines everything that the teachers are supposed to teach with the students. Our curriculum documents are maintained in what we call our database called Clever. And that's where all of the materials are that guide our teachers and help them understand how to roll out the lessons. And it kind of gives us a blueprint for what students are required to learn. And we keep in mind that we also have coordinators, our coordinators, our supervisors, our specialists, our coaches, our interventionists, and most of all, our school administrators who monitor what teachers can do. In addition to that, we have a... We keep all of the Zoom links for each school in a Google Doc for our staff who monitor those things. And so, for instance, our coordinators can Zoom... They can go into a teacher's class during a Zoom, and they can work with them, or they can see, monitor what's going on there so that they can provide support and give assistance as needed. So the pacing guide and the curriculum framework are the things that we use to guide instruction.
Okay, so I was wondering what led to the switch from utilizing a Google Doc? The reason why I'm asking this is with Google Docs, you can also collect data. And it's a... And again, it's an accountability piece. So word is... Word is... Is it because they didn't understand Google Docs? Is it that they need training?
Are you talking about the English lesson plan template?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the English lesson plan template was done in Google Docs. And part of the reason why we changed it is because of the feedback we got from teachers. Teachers were having a very difficult time inputting the data. The purpose of changing the lesson plan template was to take some of that stress off of teachers, because we've heard nothing but lesson plans, lesson plans, lesson plans. And so we modified the lesson plan. We put it in a Word doc. And yes, Google Docs does allow us to maintain the data around what we're teaching, but any document will allow us to do that, whether it's a Word doc or a Google doc, because the lesson plan is a written document. And it works better for our teachers if they can, it wasn't in a Google Doc such that teachers could collaborate upon it. It was in an electronic format where teachers had to put it in, and then it would, it would be downloaded to a spreadsheet that they could print out and use. Because we're in a virtual environment, we need everything to be available through Google Docs so that teachers can collaborate. And if you recall, collaboration is something that we're focusing on and recommending that teachers work together. So if all the first grade teachers in the school are working on a lesson plan for the week, they can collaborate in Google Docs, and they can create the lesson plans for the whole team so that one teacher doesn't have to work independently.
So, oh, okay, gotcha. That's, that's all for now. I'll, I'll let my other board members ask questions.
I'd be happy to start with you offline if you would like, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, Dr. Nguyen, thank you.
All right, who was the other board member? Oh, Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify for the students. They're going to log in on Wednesdays and do activities that do not require an instructor. And the teachers, because we do want to make sure that they have planning and they have adequate time to collaborate and do what it is that they need to do. I know we don't want to call it a teacher work day, but are there any limitations on the amount of PD or staff development that is on this day to give the teachers what it is that they've been asking for? Because in some divisions, they've called it office hours, and it kind of protects that time for the teachers to do what it is that they need to do. And I just want to make sure that we're not given a day off and then we're packing it full of stuff where the teachers still do not have the time to collaborate and work. You understand what I'm saying?
We've already developed our professional development calendar.
Okay.
And because a couple of the early, early release days fall on our, our Flipped Wednesday, we'll expand those to a full professional development day. But other than that, then the expectation is that this is a time for teachers to plan, collaborate, and be able to interact with each other, do their plans, and work with parents and things of that nature. We don't, we may do some professional development.
Right.
But it would be as needed by school for the individual needs of the teacher.
Okay, I just don't want it to end up being the dump day.
No.
So we can get the staff meeting out of the way, the content meeting out of the way, the grade level meeting out of the way. I, I want to make sure that we do protect that time for those teachers as well because even though you're working five days a week to have that day to kind of breathe, it, it's the mental, it's the mental, I can't even say relax, but it's just that mental easement of knowing that you have that time. So I just want to make sure that we give them as much as we can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, did you have your hand up? Mr. Barnes, okay. Any other board members? One of the things that I wanted to, to bring out, and Dr. Bracy and I have had several conversations because I have gotten phone calls from teachers and from parents. And I think you've, you've summed it up because when you're talking about Schoology and all of the programs, and I know we've been in, we've been in this for nine days. A lot of teachers were just overwhelmed. And, you know, when, when you look at staff development, that's really sit and go. And when you look at professional development, that's more in-depth. And I don't think our teachers, of what I'm hearing from them, they have not had the time to really absorb and understand Schoology. I mean, it's just a lot that has been thrown on them, and they're frustrated. And some of the parents, I got a long letter that I could have read tonight. I wouldn't have used the parent's name, but, I mean, it was pretty well summed up with what Sarah had said. And what I've been getting from parents is that, you know, it's too much. And they're having to, as you say, some parents are having to work. And when you, when you look at Flipped Wednesday, you know, I, I would think that on, on Wednesday would be a day where it would give the teachers an opportunity to delve into, I mean, be able to Zoom one another and collaborate in groups and talk about Schoology and all the other programs and how, and lesson plans. Because I did ask Dr. Bracy if I could, if I could have, if he would send the board a copy of the, of the format of the lesson plan. Because when a teacher's asking me about a lesson plan, I, I don't know what she's, they're talking about because I haven't seen it. And then when we're talking about the elementary, middle school, and high school schedule, I haven't seen that either. So I, I haven't gotten it, so I don't know if that's something that he can provide for us tonight or send us an email because we just need to, I like the word compassion. And I'm so glad that you've used it because I'm, I'm kind of with Sarah, and I don't know how other board members feel, and with Clu is that I think if Wednesday could be a day where, I'm not calling it a, a, a day off for students, but I am saying that it ought to be a day where the parents and the, and the, and the children can work on homework and get things ready because it's Monday, Tuesday, and then you got Wednesday, then you got Thursday and Friday. And then, then it gives the teachers an opportunity to come together and share ideas and say, I'm doing it this way, and I, I mean, I don't, I need some help. It's just a collaborative day. I just, I just feel that, you know, if a student has to continue to sign in on Wednesday, I don't know, we.
Can I, can I clarify that for you, sir?
Yeah, we just need to.
Students are not required, they're not required to sign in on Wednesday. They can sign in to get their work. Because what happens in Schoology, the teacher can post assignments. They can post prerecorded lessons. All of the activities that the, that the students have on Monday and Tuesday or any other day, they're posted in Schoology in their classroom. So when we say students are signing in, we're not requiring them to sign in on Wednesday.
Okay.
But we do, what they can do, let's say they missed the assignment from yesterday. Mom was working, they, she got home late, she didn't have time. She can sign into Schoology with them. She can pull that assignment down, and they can sit together and go over it whenever they need to. So I want to clarify that this is not going to put more pressure on parents. We can't call it a teacher work day. We can't call it a free day.
No, I.
Because that's not what it is. We want people to understand that we recognize the stress that, that they're going through, teachers and students and parents alike. This is a day to reset. This is a day to catch up. This is a day to reflect. It's also a day to collaborate and plan. I do want to back up and say that we started training for Schoology in July. It wasn't mandatory, but we did require that every administrator, every instructional assistant, every teacher, every person who worked with students was required to complete Schoology training. Now, most of our teachers took advantage of that. There were some who didn't and didn't come to take it or didn't take it until later in the summer, and that was fine. And what we found is that those, those people who started it earlier have had more practice and they are more comfortable with it. And those who started it later may be a little bit more overwhelmed.
Right.
These Wednesdays will be an opportunity for those teachers to work together with their peers, their colleagues, or with our TRTs, our teacher resource teachers, to get additional support with Schoology. It's going to take some time and some practice to implement it properly.
Right.
All of this is new. All of this is quick.
Yeah, right.
And as I share with parents, we don't want to do virtual learning either. We'd love to be in school and be face-to-face and have eye contact and proximity and, you know, work in groups together. But we are forced to do what we have to do in this situation. And as a result of this, we're moving into a new realm of education because even when we come back together, we will still have some, some type of blended learning to support or supplement our instruction. So I don't want to give the impression that we're going to have students signing in to do work because there will be no live interaction with teachers and students.
Okay, all right.
Teachers will be free to do what they need to do at schools. Principals will work with them and their teams, and this will be a time for everyone to get support.
Good. The other thing, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I just, I just want to go back. So when I asked the question that if they don't sign in on Wednesday, they will get contacted by the teacher, but then again, they're not required to sign in.
And I think I might have miscommunicated that. You asked if they're required to sign in. They're not required to sign in, but they are required to complete their work. If they have work to do, that's a day that they can complete it. There may be assignments in there for them to complete on that day. It's not just the signing in that we use for grading and for attendance. It's the completion of the task and the, the projects that they have.
I guess, Dr. Nguyen, I'm going to have the conversation with you offline as well, but what I would like to see is how did this, how does this Wednesday look a month from now or by the next board meeting? Because I know, like I said, and again, my heartburn is the perception of it being a day off and the not requiring to sign in. And it's a certain demographics that I'm worried about that, that will be a day off for them. They're not going to sign in. They don't have their parents at home. So that's my biggest heartburn with this. So I just want to revisit it and see how it's going our next board meeting.
Absolutely. And I would add that we are continuing to gather data each day because this is a whole new paradigm for all of us. So I anticipate that we will be making reports, you know, regularly as we go through this process and as we embrace this new realm of instructional practice.
Dr. Nguyen, oh, Doc, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Bracy? Yeah. Did you have your hand up?
I did, I did. I wanted to add to that with Dr. Nguyen, and she almost stated verbatim what I wanted to say is that we, we've been instructed and we've been told that we have to be in school five days a week. So what we can't come out and say is that Wednesday, we don't, we're not doing anything. So that's why it's important for teachers and students and parents both to know that there will be some level of engagement that will be occurring. Now, she laid everything out as to what that would look like. So without saying we're not going to do anything, we have to identify the things that we are going to do. So that way that, because if we're going to say it's a teacher work day, then we're not going to be able to feed students on, on Wednesday because we're not in school. So that's why we've got to be careful of how we label it to make sure that we keep things in line with what the state's expecting of us.
Right.
Yep.
All right, yeah, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. One quick question. With the Wednesday, is there any way that we can provide, not teacher, parent trainings or parent videos or parent support on those Wednesdays during the school hours where maybe working parents can't necessarily get to some of our IT problems is, you know, like trainings for Clever and Schoology? Is there any way that those websites, those, you know, webinars or Zooms can be done on Wednesdays to help out the parents as well that may be home during the school day? I'm just trying to hit every.
Well, we've asked that.
Trying to hit a home run.
We've asked that our parent liaisons engage with parents, especially at the elementary level, to assist them with any challenges that they may be facing. We've also asked our behavior interventionists, or we will be asking them because we're having a number of concerns, too, with Zoom and some of the behaviors that we're seeing on our Zoom, on our Zoom videos when teachers are teaching. We're not just having to manage in some instances in transparency. We're managing kids and, and we're managing the individuals that are there to supervise them sometimes.
Right.
And so we're going to work with our parents to help them understand, you know, that this is a, this is a classroom. You know, this, while you only see your child, or you may only be focusing on your child, there are other children on the screen, and we have to be cognizant of that. So yes, we, we're asking, the elementary principals in particular, I asked them today to create some parent camps and to start working with parents around what this should look like for them and what it should look like for their children. We're also working with them on etiquette. You know, what, what should you do when you're on Zoom? Holding morning meetings with your elementary students, helping them to understand how they have to interact with each other. So again, it's, it's a whole new process for everyone. We can't say what will happen because we don't have any data that shows us that, but we will come out of this better than we went into it. And so as things progress, we are learning and we are building. And I tell you, if we stick to those four Cs and we're flexible, I think we'll be just fine.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the two words I used this year are grace and flexibility, you know. So those are my two key words this year. So I just want to say thank you. It's an ongoing process. We'll get through this together. But we just need to communicate with, you know, parents and staff to us and to you so that everybody knows and everybody's in that full communication circle because things get lost in translation. So I, I appreciate the direct dialogue. Thank you.
Mr. Slaver, when a, when a teacher, or well, when I say, when a parent has a problem of signing on and they get very frustrated, who do they call? Do they call your office, and how do you provide support to the parents that are having difficulty signing on or using the technology?
So, you know, Dr. Nguyen mentioned that we're, we're nine days in, and I, I can't, I can't believe it. I thought the semester was over, the way things. These have been nine long days. But, so, great question, great, great question, Mr. Parent. We, on, on the very first day of, of school, we launched our IT or our, our technology support call center. So the, the folks, the, the, the call center number has been published. It's, it's made available on our website. So we've, well, and just to let you know, on our first day, the call center before 12 noon received 752 calls.
Wow.
Yes, we've been very busy, but, but we've been also been very productive. You know, I'll echo Dr. Nguyen when I say that our mantra has been not only to be compassionate, but flexibility and empathy because folks are, 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 you know, it's a, it's a whole new world. And that's kind of been our mantra in the call center is we've, we tried to, you know, to support those folks. And thank you so much to, to her and her staff and Jennifer Thomas and her team for helping us to answer a lot of those questions on how-tos and things of that nature. And I got to give a shout out to our, our technology support group under the leadership of Tom McKenna that assisted with setting up the call center. It's been a great, a great way for us to start school and, and to provide a voice so folks can call and, and get their, get their issues resolved.
But how, I, thank you for that report, but how do you actually help the parent? If the parent calls a call center, how do you actually help the parent? If the parent doesn't know anything about technology, how do you actually help them? Do you go in and take over their computer? Or you don't send anybody to the house to do it?
No, no, I don't, unfortunately, you know, we, we can petition for more staff if, if that's what we need. I could call on 13,600 and some students.
I walked right into that one, didn't I?
Yeah, but no, so it really depends on what the issue is. So, so we, not only do we have the call center where we can actually replicate the issue and walk them through and, and help them there, but we can escalate, we can escalate that, too. We also, we also have in-person help desks at, at five, five to six locations daily. So we can direct parents and students to those in-person help desks. If we can't do what's called desktop support, we can do desk-side support in person at those locations. So that's our escalation point there is that we, and it doesn't have to be their zone school. We try to find a location that's near them so that way we can, we can, we can assist them in that fashion. So, and then if they can't make it there, we, we work with them to schedule a time and, and have somebody meet them at their zone school. So flexibility.
What are those five locations?
The schedule is on our virtual learning page. So it, it shows, we, Monday through Thursday, we're at each of those locations on the virtual learning page. This is the schedule to start. As Dr. Nguyen said again, this is all new. So this is our starting point, and we're gathering data, and we're going to adjust and be flexible to the needs of the community. So right now, these are the, these are, this is the schedule. So, and we're listening and we're adjusting where we need to.
What are those five? Can you just mention those five locations? Can you mention those five locations for viewing public so they can, may not have that?
Sure will. I'm going to go to the virtual learning page. Sure will. I'm gonna go to the virtual learning page under technology. Your technology support. So on Mondays from 11 to 1, we're at Churchland High School, Churchland Middle School, Norcom High School, Brighton Elementary School and James Hurst Elementary. Tuesdays from 11 to 1, we're at Churchland Primary, John Tyler Elementary School, Simondsdale Elementary School, Craddock Middle School, Mount Herman Pre-K and Waters Middle School. Wednesdays, we're at Olive Branch. We're at Douglas Park, Parkview, West Haven and Wilson High School. And Thursdays, we're at Churchland Elementary, Victory Elementary, Hodges Manor Elementary, Lakeview Elementary, Churchland Academy and Churchland Pre-K. And again, this is all available at the virtual learning page. If you go to our main page, it's across the main, main bar on our website.
Thank you.
Also, the phone number for the call center is 393-6432.
Good. And, and parents that are, people that are tuned in and watching this, they, they can have access to this information. Dr. Win, one question about special ed. In your special ed report, how many in-person special ed students are attending?
I'm gonna let Ms. Pamela Ballow-Harty answer that question for you.
Good evening, Mr. Parent. As of today, we have a total of 59 students who receive in-person instruction.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Yes, sir.
And then the rest of them are virtual? And then how do they get, receive support services like speech and OT and other?
The OT and related services, they're also done virtually through Zoom. Right now, we are contracting with a company to do our teletherapy.
Okay. Because, I mean, just because we're virtual learning, we still have to, we still have to abide by the law as far as special education and that child's IEP, so.
Yes, yes. And also our IEPs were actually amended before the beginning of school, September 18th, to look at how we can address the hours. Because typically you would think, you know, as far as the services, there's no way we can possibly provide services all day long for the students as far as this, as the services. So the IEP teams actually looked at those goals and objectives to find out which intensive services will benefit the child from now until we are back into the school setting. And those IEP amendments were agreed upon by the parents with the help of the LEA representatives. And we realized that it is, it is a challenging process for our students. And that's why we really want to look at the most intensive kids and their needs to make sure that we address those needs and that we always provide them with a free and appropriate education. We understand that we may not always make it 100%, but we want to make it a good faith effort and just making sure that we keep, maintain an open line of communication and like Dr. Win said, the compassion and just working together as a team. We don't have all the answers, but we know that we're going to do our very best to meet the individual needs of our students.
Good. Thank you so much.
And thus far, we have done well as far as the numbers. We actually started off with 37. And like I said, today, we have a total of 59. And that also includes our CSEP students.
Okay. Ms. Hines, your hands up.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Hardy, thank you for what you do and thank you for how you're providing services. And I think you just answered my question. You started with 37 and you're now at 59. So there is a process for those parents who really wanted to try it at home and not send their students in. So there is a process that if we get farther down the road and we stay this virtual route, if needed, students can come back into the building if it's just not working out at home, correct?
Yes, ma'am. But the biggest challenge is also that we have to have adequate staffing. So the staffing that we have now are those individuals who are committed to come in to provide instruction.
Thank you. Yes, staffing is a big issue. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Any other questions? All right, we.
I had, I had.
Oh, Mr. Barnes, yes, sir.
Somebody asked, and I think this goes to Ms. Win, it says, are principals allowed to only have encore teams to have 20 to 25 minutes of encore?
Encore is 20 to 25 minutes, yes.
Okay.
For elementary. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was, it was a question from offline, I wanted to make sure, from one of the staff members.
Ms. Allen, do you finish, Mr. Barnes?
Yes, yes.
All right, Ms. Allen?
Can you share with me with the students that are actually inside the buildings, what protocols are we using to make sure that there's not a COVID outbreak? How are the class sizes set up? Are we doing temperatures? Can you take me through that, please? And if in fact there is a positive COVID, what is our, what is our process?
Dr. Bracy, do you want to speak to that or Dr. Simmons? We have a, we have a health plan in place and we do have a protocol in place where students have to be a certain distance apart. But I'll let Dr. Bracy speak more specifically to that.
Yeah, with the plan, we have the social distancing protocol already in place. As far as the classroom itself, the students are social distanced as much as they, as they can be. As far as, I think the question was, would we have an outbreak? Well, we're following the procedures that we have in place now that when we have staff that are working that, that report that they have a positive test. And we, we have a disinfecting team that will go in and declaim, we know that they notify us who the person is. We find out who they've been around and who the contact tracing, and then we follow through with that protocol. So that's the same thing that we, we follow through with, with the students as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, are temperatures being taken every day for the students?
No.
Okay. So I just want to be clear, because I work in healthcare, we take temperatures every day just to make sure that there's not a rise in temp, which could be a beginning of a start of a possible situation. And then there's a questionnaire that we ask just to make sure that they haven't been around anybody who's had a positive COVID test. If we're not asking that question or we're not taking temperatures, where are we just solely relying on somebody to get sick and then tell us that they had a positive COVID test?
That's, we, we're following the protocol that was put in place for us with the, with the BDOE and temperature checks were not required. We're, we monitor the symptoms. If someone self-reports that they're positive, then we follow through with that plan. And that's the same thing that we've been in contact with the Portsmouth Health Department as well. Because eventually we're gonna have, we hope we'll be able to get into the hybrid where the rest of the students will come back in. And that was one of the things that we looked at as far as temperature checks. Would that be something that we could do? And if we did, would it happen at the, before they get on the bus? I don't think we had personnel to do that. Then when they get into the building, you know, we, I think we looked at that as something similar to the security checks when students come into the buildings back last year, years before in a normal setting. So we're basically monitoring. We don't have the protocols that we've established that we are requiring temperature checks. And that's with the staff as well as the students at this point.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Barnes.
Sorry, it's a statement. I had a few parents reach out to me this week about attendance that said their children are being marked absent, although they're tuning into the Zoom. But if I can remember, and I think it was said on this Zoom meeting today, that is done by the, the assignments that you do. But again, including even on my phone right now, there's some people that's talking about how their parent, their kids are being marked absent because of that, because, because they're taking attendance in class and they're, I guess, maybe not responding at the moment that their, their name is called. So is there something that we can do about that to make sure that these kids are being, not being marked absent?
We had, I had some discussion today with the elementary principals about this to give them some clarity. Now, just because they not, they're not marked absence for not being on the live session with the teacher, that doesn't mean that they don't, they don't ever have to sign on to the live session. We encourage that because that's where they actually get the instructional time with the teacher. What I've advised the principals, though, is if they complete a task within 24 hours of the lesson, they should be marked present. And I think they have some clarity with that today. Again, it's an ongoing thing, but when students are able to log into Schoology and pull out the assignments and they complete the assignment, then they can get credit for attendance. And I've clarified that with elementary principals today. With high school, it's just a little different because those students do need to sign in and they need to be present on the Zoom because their classes are very different from elementary.
Well, maybe, maybe I need to clarify. Is it any way, because the, these, these parents that's, that's reaching out to me are saying that their kids are actually in the Zoom meetings, the Zoom class, and they're getting marked absent anyway?
What I would encourage them to do is to reach out to their principals and let them know this or they can feel free to email me and I'll be happy to work with them with their principals around that. But there may be some mistakes being made with it, whatever the case is, if they're in the Zoom, then they should be counted present.
Okay. Any other questions? Dr. Win, at the end of the year, are we gonna be get, will the students be tested, SOL testing? I mean, I know that all the schools' divisions in the state are waived to accreditation, right?
They're waived for accreditation, but they're not waived for SOL testing. In fact, we're getting ready to start the SOL testing for writing. And Mr. Nottingham is in the process of working up a plan for that because we will be administering the writing test. We'll also be giving some, the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program will be giving the math portion of that test. And we will have a plan to bring in students by school, about four students per teacher with that plan to test them in person with parental consent. Dr. Nichols is working on that piece. So we've not been waived from SOL testing. We've, we've gotten a waiver for accreditation. So I do want to clarify that we will continue to do SOL testing because there are students who will need to earn verified credits for those high school courses in particular. So we're looking right now at high school testing because remember, we're on a four-by-four block. So we have students, 11th grade students who will need to take the end-of-course writing and reading for English.
Right. I just wanted to make sure if that was clarified, that we were, we were waived as far as the accreditation, but as far as the SOL, that was not. Okay, all right. Any other questions?
I have, I have one more.
Oh, sure, Mr. Barnes.
This is, this relates to content pacing. They're asking, are they required to teach the same schedule although they're gonna have less time?
I'm not sure I understand that question, but yes, they will be required to teach the same schedule on the four days that they're in session. The fifth day, the Wednesday is used again for teacher collaboration. And I would encourage this person, if it's a teacher, to have some conversation with their administrator so that they can gain some clarity on a one-on-one.
Okay. They hear you.
All right. I think we have covered 4.2, discussion of virtual learning. Any other questions regarding virtual learning? Mr. Lamb?
Just real quick, for Dr. Win, I mean, I, I mean, I don't agree with it, but I understand that they did not take away the SOL component of all this and they only did the accreditation. I'm just very, I'm a little perplexed with regards to, we're living in a very unusual time. SOL tests, anyway, are very stressful under a traditional time. I, I would, I'd love to know what the state is thinking with regards to how, how this would even be effective. Like, for example, I know that SOL retakes. Are we adjusting the scores for SOL retakes in a time like this? So again, I'm looking at this like, again, here we go, we're putting a triangle in a circle and thinking it's going to work. We're trying to use traditional methods in an untraditional aspect. I, I mean, I understand you're mandated by the state to do that, but at the same time, though, do we see, is there any leeway at all with this? Because I would just hate to see students being held to pass these tests on their senior year under the circumstances of what we have. They're not even given traditional instruction.
So can I, can I just tell you what was shared with us? You are preaching to the choir, Mr. Lamb, but I will say that the information that we received was that the, that the scores would not be used for accreditation. The state is looking to use them for growth.
Okay.
So how that works, I don't understand. And we are not really sure. It could be, because just as we are learning as we're going, it could be that the state may come back and say, we don't have to administer SOL tests.
Right.
What they have said is if students choose not to take it in person, it does not count against us.
Okay. So, so let me, so I know you just said, I'm preaching to the choir, so let the preacher preach for a second with regards to. So what I'm hearing then is we, as a division, will not be held accountable for, for the scores for accreditation purposes. But yet, these individual students taking these exams are gonna be held accountable, especially when things that, they've got to pass certain subjects to get that diploma. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
And we're, I mean, this is fair, I mean, this is, that makes no sense. I'm just gonna leave it at that. Because.
I mean, there's some things that we can, that we can, as a board, but this is one of them that comes from the Board of Education and we have to comply. I mean.
Well, and I understand that, Chairman, I, I understand that Chairman Parent, I just, you know, we were talking about even earlier about, you know, the student and being there for students and student-led. And to me, this does not look remotely anything like it. So, I mean, I get it. I get it.
All right.
Derek has his hand up.
In defense of the state, the state wrote a letter and tried to get a waiver for the SOL test. We are held by the federal government. That's the reason we have to test. The federal government said that they would not waive that requirement, that we still have to test. And that's why the state is moving forward with the testing, but they're giving us lots of flexibility. Like, for example, with the writing test, conceivably, we can push that to the spring if we want to and just allow the individuals that are graduating, take the test or give them an opportunity to take the test if they choose to. But they're giving us flexibility.
Thanks. Thanks, Derek, for clarifying that.
Derek, can I ask one more question, Derek? For the high school students that have to get that verified credit, is there a waiver on the score that they get? Or do they just have to sit for the test?
No, well, this, well, in order to get their verified credit, they have to pass that.
So they still have that passing requirement that hasn't been negotiated in that flexibility bit, okay?
That's not.
Okay. Because, yeah, I've got several high school students around me that are curious as to how it's gonna work.
You know what? By, by the time it's all over with, Ms. Hines, I think that's gonna change. I think there's gonna be enough complaints that the Board of Education gotta back off on that. All right. So we have spent a lot of time on virtual learning because we've had a lot of concerns from a lot of different people, parents, teachers. And so let's move on. All right. At this time, Dr. Camardi, I understand that you have a resolution?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Dr. Bracy, member of the boards. Tonight, I bring for your consideration a resolution to declare October Bully Prevention Month. And the resolution reads, whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant challenge in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or a victim, and whereas students who experience bullying are at increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties and lower academic achievement, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can occur in many places on and off school grounds, and whereas it's important for Virginia's parents, students, teachers and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the issue as a school community, and whereas the Portsmouth School Board has a developed policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to significantly decrease instances of bullying, now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth School Board recognizes the month of October 2020 as Bully and Prevention Month with the intention. with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in our schools and classrooms throughout the month.
Now, I have this marked as presentation. Is this, is this to be voted on?
Typically, we do vote to pass a resolution.
I thought so. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move for approval.
Yeah, Alan's second.
And Alan's second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Mrs. Williams? Mr. Parent?
Yes. Now, I don't know how many of you kept your bullying t-shirt from last year, but I think at our October meeting, we always wear our bully, bullying t-shirt, so if you don't have one, Lauren, can you, Dr. Bracy, can you get us some, get those board members that do not have one?
Sure thing. No problem.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving around along, the item, minutes, consideration of the minutes for August 13th. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move for approval, Hines.
Hines, do I have a second?
Second, Atkinson.
Atkinson seconded. Any, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the Human Resources Report. Mrs. Durham?
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, board members, and Dr. Bracy. I have presented to you the Human Resources Report, which covers information about the United Way Campaign. That will be, yes, sir, it will be launched on September the 28th, and it will go through October 23rd. This year, we will feature a campaign that will include all virtual contributions. And so we're hoping that our giving exceeds what it has in the past, because it will be very convenient for people to give. And we have training about that on Monday.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, and also I typically give you a vacancy report, but I ask that you are patient and wait for next month for that, because we will be making some changes based on the 30-day count. And so once that comes in, we'll, we'll have a truer picture of our vacancies, because enrollment has changed quite a bit.
What is the United Way goal? What is PPS goal?
Our goal this year is $40,000. Last year, we, we raised a little over $30,000.
Okay.
Yes.
So every year, they, they up it a little bit?
They up it a little bit, yes, sir.
Got it. Okay. Now you want to move on to the Summer Hiring Report?
Yes, sir. You have been given the Summer Hiring Report, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that, if there are any at this time.
Move for approval. Patillo?
Second, Atkinson.
Not for the summer hire report. What's the one you're talking about? The summer hire report?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not for both.
Yeah, it's, it's informational. What is, is the next item, Consideration of the Employee Transaction Report. Do I have a motion to approve that transaction report?
Move for approval. Patillo?
Second, Atkinson.
Atkinson second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Ms. Williams is here.
Okay, Mrs. Williams, I didn't, I didn't know you were back.
Well, my video has stopped. I had to go out and come back in. I missed the couple, but I'm here.
Okay, you're, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the Budget and Planning. Mr. Falk? You got, you got, you're muted.
That dreaded word at the bottom. Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy. You have a number of items in your packet tonight. There are financial reports for June, July, and August for your consideration, and also I have a report on the federal payroll tax deferral. I wanted to make a comment on the June report. The June report is very similar to what you received for the reappropriations back in our August the 13th meeting. I'm pleased to report that the city actually approved all of our reappropriations this year at their meeting on September the 8th. So all of our funds that we have requested to be returned to us are being returned to us this year, and we will use them in the manner that was in your resolution, mainly for a lot of COVID-19 mitigation, as well as technology and in instructional areas that we need to assist with. So I want to thank you guys for your support for those, but they were approved by the city council.
Ms. Hines, I think you had your hand up or your thumb up?
I was clapping, because I was like, please say that one more time, you know, that it went through on the first time. I don't know, Mr. Falk, that you've ever been able to say that in your time that you have been with us. So I, I thank you for your determination and thank you for sticking with us. We do appreciate your, your dogged determination, and we appreciate everything that you do in this budget office, and I know that as we go through this year, it's going to, it's going to get a little bit more hairy. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm, I, I was just clapping, because that's just fantastic.
Do I have, do I have a approval for consent for eight, eight point one, eight point two, and eight point three? That we vote on all three at one time?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please, for consent vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Amen, yes. Mr. Falk?
Yes, sir.
Just on page 13 of 14, down at the bottom, this deals with our, 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 our Risk Management Fund. And you, you have quoted the, you know, what we've been going through with, with the city with, concerning that. Have we heard anything back from, I guess, maybe the attorney? Have we heard anything back from the Attorney General regarding the, or the ordinance, I mean, not the ordinance, but the opinion? We, we sent, Senator Lucas and the delegate sent the letter that you wrote, we wrote by the Attorney General to, and I don't think we've heard anything. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I followed up with both representatives about a week ago, maybe, maybe 10 days or so, by email to ask them in the event that this came up. I've not heard a response back from either Senator Lucas or Delegate Scott regarding that request.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this out, and I probably, I already know the answer, but, Dr. Bracy, would it do us any good at this point, since we have an interim city manager and an interim city attorney for the liaisons to meet, or is that something that we should wait? We've got three more months. I hate for three months to go by, and then January come, you, you're going to probably end up, you're going to end up having a, a, a new mayor and probably some different council members. So I don't know what the board's pleasure is that we, do we, do we wait until January to see this, or do you want to move forward and see if we cannot get this resolved before the end of the year? What is the board's pleasure? I just bring it up because this has been hanging over us for the last six, seven months, and, you know, anyway. I like to hear from the board members what your thoughts are this point.
I'm sorry, Chairman.
Go ahead.
You're talking about risk management, correct?
Yes.
The resolution of risk management?
Yeah, if you look on, if you look on page 13, down at the bottom, where that ordinance was thrown at us, and that $5.1 million, that five, I mean, that's still hanging over us. That's our money. And, you know, Mr. Falk had to address that. I mean, of all those questions that he had to answer, I mean, the bottom line is that this is, I mean, it got ridiculous for his staff to try to, to take all this time to research all this stuff, which had nothing to do with, I mean, what, what they said to us, all we need is the Optima End of the Month Report, and that satisfied it, but it, they came back and said, no, it did not, and you're going to have to answer all these questions. Well, all they've been doing is, is stalling, and I don't know if the board is interested in pursuing this, or you don't want it, or you want, as a board, to wait until January. That's what I need to hear from you.
My opinion, and this is just me as one person, I think that we still continue to have those conversations, even with it is with the interim, simply because this discussion cannot stop. And so the interim is going to be in charge of connecting the old to the new, and we do, we do think that there will be a new manager before this council leaves. And so I think we keep those discussions going simply so that we don't lose institutional knowledge from one place to the next. And so as people interview for this position and look at this position, and as council has those interviews with this position, they know that this is still is a pressure point for us and that we want to keep it moving. So regardless of who we're having conversations with, in my opinion, I think it's still worth having the conversation with the people that are in charge to this point, simply to keep the conversation on the table rather than having to bring it back and put it on the table at a later date. My opinion.
All right. Any other board members' comments? Ms. Allen?
I am of the belief that the liaison should also be meeting. I think that we should definitely be having the conversation interim city manager to Dr. Bracy, but I also believe that the liaison should also maintain that level of communication with the city council liaisons. At least we should be making the request to have the meeting. And, you know, whether or not they want to move forward with it or not, that's up for, you know, their, their determination, whether or not they want to keep doing the work of the people, which is what we're still elected to do until we're no longer elected to do so. So I think we need to continue the conversation. There should be a meeting. There should be a meeting also with Dr. Bracy and Mr. Pace, along with you guys.
Okay. Dr. Bracy, can you set up, I mean, I know that you and this interim city manager will probably be talking, but can you set up a, a meeting with the liaisons with the city? I think that is Clark and Lisa Burke, and then Cordell and myself, and you, and the interim city manager, and let's have, let's have a discussion now. If you could set that up sometimes in October? Or request, in other words, we're, we're, as a board, we're requesting liaisons, the lia, liaison, I can't even talk now, meet sometimes, I guess, in October to discuss this, because we, we keep picking this can, can down the road, and we're not getting anywhere, so.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you. All right. At this time, Mr. Falk, federal payroll tax deferral.
All right. This was a question, I believe, that came from Ms. Duncan Heinz, so I wanted to address it. I'm going to go through a background. I'm going to go through a little bit of, of items tonight, because it's a little complex, but I want to make sure that you and the public understands this process. So the background on this is back on August the 8th, President Trump signed an executive order which would defer, and I'll explain what that means later, the withholding of the employee's share of the social security tax, which totals about 6.2% of salary. We all pay it. And it would be effective from September the 1st through December 31st, 2020. The president then asked the Secretary of the Treasury to draft the rules regarding that deferral. On August the 28th, the Secretary of Treasury issued guidelines for employers to consider if they decide to implement the deferral. With that, the guidelines are as follows. First, the participation in the program is voluntary, and employers make the decision as to whether to allow the deferral of social security taxes from September to December. You will hear two terms. You'll hear a term opting in and a term opting out. Opting in means that you will allow employees to defer those social security taxes from September to December. Opting out means that the employer will not allow them to defer the social security taxes, or keep it the same as it is right now.
Right.
Secondly, this program is a deferral program, not a forgiveness program. So the employees, if we opted in to this program, they wouldn't be deferred from September to December, or, excuse me, withheld from September to December, but they would have to pay it back between January 1st and April 30th of 2021. So I, I want to make that clear. It's not, hey, we're going to cancel this. You don't have to pay the IRS. No. It's a deferral program. You can, you don't have to pay it now, but you pay it later. The, so basically, the effect of that on employees is that from January to April, they would ultimately be paying two sets of social security taxes. Their regular 6.2%, and then the proportionate amount of what they had, they owe between September and December over however many pay periods we have in that particular cycle from January to April. The other caveat here is that the employer is liable for paying these taxes. It's not, it's the employee, but we, since we pay the IRS, we're liable. So when, this is a situation where that will become a little dicey. We have an employee who's worked with us. They leave in December. We find out that they've left, maybe after that last paycheck has been done, and we didn't deduct that amount from their check. So the school division would be on the hook for that amount, because they pay it back between January and April, and they're not with us anymore. So, and again, there are also questions about whether it's legal to take that money from that employee before January of 2021. So with that, our summary and our conclusions, based on some research that we've done, we would recommend that we opt out of this program, meaning we would not allow employees to defer their money, and for a few reasons. Limited benefits for PPS as well as employees, because they're going to have to pay it back. The potential of placing a financial hardship on our employees, that they would have to pay it back at a later date, and the potential of a liability for PPS if we are not able to recoup the money from those employees. Interestingly enough, in payroll over the past probably two, three weeks, we've gotten some calls from employees. About 40 employees have called our office. 36 of them were not in favor of opting in, and the other four were calling to ask for information. We also talked to a number of school divisions, other employers, as well as did research. And most of the school divisions we talked to in this area are not opting into the program. They're deciding to opt out. Some of them have already done presentations at their school board meetings. And also, a lot of for-profit organizations aren't opting in either. The only people I could find that opted into this were the, was the federal government, because it was mandated. And some of their agencies have actually opted out as well. So I just wanted to give you an overview while, what our decision would be based on the, the data and the research, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. So is this something that the board has to decide, or is this something that staff has already decided and the decision? I just want to make sure, because I do, excuse me, I do know that there have been some boards that have voted to opt in or opt out, and like you said, everybody's tending to opt out. And I, so my question was, is that something we have to vote on, number two? And so my question was, is that something we have to vote on, number two? Thank you for your clarification, because like you, I was getting phone calls. Everybody hears, oh, I can get some money, but you read sentences into the paragraph, and it's, and it's a payback issue. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what the ramifications were and that we weren't opting to give people more money, you know, because of X, Y, and Z. And I didn't want to put our staff in any more financial hardship in January, when it's already difficult for our staff. So thank you for the clarification. And my question is, is, is do we have to vote on this? Or is this something, the decision the staff, the staff can make without our input?
Mr. Falk, do we, do we want to change, change this from discussion to roll call vote? Or, or can we defer this until October roll call vote? Do we have to decide tonight? Can we decide tonight?
It would be best to decide tonight, based on this document. I don't know that a board vote is necessary, but obviously that is the pleasure of the board. If you'd like to vote, that's the pleasure of the board.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Parent. Mr. Parent, I think that that's a, considered a day-to-day staff decision, I believe, as far as, is that. But I guess Mr. Carroll can maybe expand on that, but I just want to make sure we're not dipping into day-to-day personal, personal issues.
Does the board have to vote on this, Mr. Carroll?
My, my view is that you do not have to vote on it. It's on the agenda as discussion. I, you know, in my view, I think it's day-to-day, frankly. I, I think Mr. Falk wanted to bring it to the attention of the board due to the question that was posed before the meeting, just for educational purposes and so you could discuss it. But in my view, it's day-to-day.
Okay, all right. All right, moving on. Dr. Bracy, your monthly report, sir. You're up, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. All right. So, since the first day of, of school, which was eight days ago, more than fourteen thousand students in the city of Portsmouth have been logging online, sitting in virtual classes and taking part in new learning together. We said going into the start of this year that it's gonna look, it's gonna look like a year that we've never seen before, anything in the past. But we also have staff working hard during the summer to ensure that we will still have a meaningful, rigorous instruction from day one. And as you've heard from Dr. Nguyen, that has been taking place. I wanted to begin by definitely just, just giving my heartfelt thanks to the teachers who have taken on this new task to work with our students. I would like to recognize our students for their efforts as well. I mean, I, I can't underscore the amount of work and innovation and creativity and patience that has gone into this for our teaching staff to get to this point. It hasn't been easy, and that I know. I was at Simondsdale this morning, and I had a chance to talk with Ms. Epiphany Hill, our division-wide, citywide teacher of the year. And Mr. Parent, to answer one of the questions that you asked early to.
Asked the question.
To Dean, that was, who's helping the parents walk through some of these issues that they're having? And she said that she spent time going over the step-by-step of what the parents need to do as far as the click, you know, she felt that she worked with, with the tech firm because it, along with teaching, she had to walk them through the, the steps to, to get their computer working right, to understand how to navigate your school logic. So our teachers are playing a part in that as well. They're taking on that, that role also. And, you know, of course, we know they're a lot of, they're not alone. We've got our operations teams that have been working nonstop to make sure that our buildings are clean. Had an opportunity this morning to speak with the head of our custodial staff. Dr. Simmons is having an in-service for them, and got a chance to thank them for what they were doing. They're actually the ones that are keeping those buildings clean. And I thank them for the job that they've done. You know, we, we've heard from Dr. Simmons and Reverend Matillo from the operations report that the buildings are so much cleaner this year. They did a lot of work this summer. One reason being, you know, that we started in March, when, when school closed. You know, they continued to work, so they were able to do that. And then I wanted to make sure I recognized that the, they call themselves the DDT team, the deep disinfecting team, that go around to the schools as well to do the deep cleaning and the spraying with the, with those infecting, with those sprayers. What do they call them, Dr. Simmons? The electrostatic sprayers. So wanted, wanted to recognize them as well. I mean, they've done an outstanding job. So thanks to Dr. Simmons and the coordinators and supervisors for their role in that as well. But I'm just proud of the entire PPS team for getting us to this point, that everybody has stepped up with the challenges that have been thrown at us. You know, we understand that the parents, the teachers, the students, you know, we're all going through this together. This is new, so we're just trying to navigate through this as well. But, you know, the biggest group in all of this that I want to thank are the families, because the parents are the ones that are having to make those adjustments. We understand that they're working parents that are out there. We understand that, and we're trying to do our part to make sure that this is as easy to, for them as possible. You know, it's, it's difficult at times, and I understand that. But we try to make sure that what we're doing and what we're providing to them is user-friendly, because, you know, they may sacrifice, sacrifices, you know, themselves. But I couldn't mention and recognize others without mentioning, mentioning them as well, because their partnership in this has been very key. So to, just to close out, you know, you know, we're, we're in our second week in instruction. And, you know, we've had a lot of great dialogue tonight from the different people. And we asked the curriculum team to be on board earlier in the event that there were some specific questions. So thank you to Spattle Hardy for jumping in and sharing the information with our face-to-face students that are in place. So our folks have done a stellar job, Mr. Parent, board members. I'm proud of where we are and what we're doing. If you look at, if you look at Portsmouth over the last eight days, and you look at what has occurred around us and with some of our neighbors, I think we've, think we've gotten it right thus far. So that's.
Sounds like it.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item are board comments. Do we have any comments on board members?
Hey Chairman, Parent. Go ahead. Go ahead, Board Member Lamb, you go first.
No, that's, I just, I just had a question from a parent asking, and I knew I, but they're asking, are, are we looking at students coming back earlier than November?
That's for me? No, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Agerson?
Thank you Chairman Parent, two, two questions. The first question is, as a call center professional, I do understand that call flow and, and taking a lot of calls can be stressful. Is there a need to hire another representative to help answer the calls? Or has the call volume decreased for our help line?
I'll let Dean jump in there and answer that.
Yeah, we've, we've sent, thank you for the question. Yeah, we've seen a, a large decline in our call volumes since, since the first day. Obviously, you'll also know that when, when we have disruptions in service, those call volumes are gonna increase. So we're also putting tools out there that will help us with those types of things. Like, there's a, there's a, there's a page linked off of, again, the virtual learning page called System Status. So families can actually register or subscribe to this so that if there's a change in any status of the, right now, we currently have five systems up there, and we plan on growing it. If there's a change in that status, they will actually get contact. They'll get an email, or they'll get a text message, depending on how they subscribe. So it's great to know if a system is seeing degraded service, but even better, they're not having to call to get an update, so if the system's back online. So status, the status page will also send them out a notification when that status returns to normal. So we're putting these tools together as we're kind of flying the plane to, to do, to do things that are, just putting tools out there that are gonna benefit us in the long run. So, but thank you.
All right, and the, the second question, this may be for you too, Dean. What's the process for parents who don't have access to the internet to apply for the Wi-Fi hotspots?
So they can certainly come to the in-person help desk. I mean, to ask the, if they, if they have a cell phone, they can certainly go, they can navigate to the virtual learning page. And there's a, there's a link off the virtual learning page called Internet Access. They can go there, it gives them the different options, and one of those options is applying for a hotspot. So make sure that they do go and apply there. At the in-person help desk, they can apply right there as well. And in most cases, right now, we're, we're satisfying those requests on the spot, so they're getting a hotspot right then and there.
Do you have an approximate, Dean, of how many we already provided so far?
I don't have that information, I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem. Thank you so much, that's all I have.
Dr. Bracy, did you have, did you have your meeting with Cox? You said you were gonna meet with Cox Cable?
No, I haven't.
Okay, I just wondered, because they, you know, they offer that, I think it's $9.99 a month for internet service. I, I didn't know if, if we had gotten that out to the, to our parents.
Yeah, that information is out.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then one question I have, oh, Ms. Hines, I'm sorry.
No.
Go ahead.
Thank you, two questions. One is, at our next meeting, are we gonna review ADM? Are we gonna review our, our September thirty count? Because I have a, I do have a question about finance, and I do have a question about budget cuts. That, there was another superintendent in the region just in, within the last week that came out and said that he and his division are looking at a $1.3 million deficit because of ADM and because of budget cuts from the state. So I would like to have that addressed at some point in the near future, because I do believe that is a discussion that we need to have if we are in the same boat. And the second question I have is, the call just went out that tomorrow is a, is a virtual day. So the question I'm gonna have, and the question that this has already had, is, are the students required to log in tomorrow? Because teachers have already done lesson plans for Friday, what is the, what is the expectation for tomorrow for the flip? Is it the same as it's gonna be on the flipped Wednesdays? I, I just need some clarification, so I know where to go with this.
Let's start next Wednesday.
It'll be the same for students as it would be on the flip day. They can log in and get work tomorrow. We know it's short notice, but this was kind of an inclement weather plan. But as, it's my understanding that right now, it only pertains to the students. We will still have our buildings open and personnel will still report to school. So it is a flip day for students.
Okay, so it's still a workday for, for teachers?
Right.
Okay.
The one thing I would like to ask, you know, we're getting ready to have our public hearings concerning the change of names on schools. And the first one is coming up on the twenty eighth, and I would suspect that you're gonna have more than, than fifty people that are gonna show up. Now, as a board member, and I'm sure the rest of you would like to attend, but I don't want to take somebody's spot. Dr. Bracy, have you thought through how we're going, if board members want to attend this, how we, how we can attend without bumping somebody? I mean, I want parents to be there to speak. I don't want to take a person's place. Is this gonna be virtual so that we can, we can hear the comments? Or is, how, how, how is this process gonna work? Maybe you and Ms. Williams, I don't know if y'all have worked it out, but how is it gonna work?
Ms. Williams and I have, have talked about it, and I share, I gave her an update in terms of where we were and what we were looking at. So now, we're out of the, the phase where we can only have fifty people.
Right.
So with that, I asked Dr. Simmons and his operations team to go to the little theater and, and looking at it through social distancing to let us, give us an idea of about how many people we can have seated in the theater. So once I get that information, I mean, I can let you know, I can let the board know what we're looking at as far as attendance in the building. But what, what I shared with Mrs. Williams is that, once we reach that capacity, you know, the, then we're gonna look at the rotation of speakers. You know, if we have people that have signed up prior to, we will have them, we'll have people, whoever, when they speak, then they can leave. So someone else that's out there that's registered to speak will be able to come in and, and speak as well. So that's how we're gonna look at doing that.
All right, Mr. James, how many people do we have? Have you, how many people now do you have that signed up to speak for the twenty eighth? I can't hear you.
I have one person that has signed up to speak, and then I have one, that's it.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, are there any other board comments, board members' comments? All right, Ms. Allen, and then Mr. Lamb.
Yes, two things. When it's come, and I think we've discussed this before, when it comes to the student representative, maybe having them go earlier in the agenda before we go into closed session. I think as school starts to come back and things, sometimes these meetings can go long. So if we could do the student representative in the agenda before we go into our initial closed session, so in case, whether it be Ms., Mr. Hunt or the alternate, if they decide that they wish to leave, they, we will have had the opportunity to hear their content. And if there's anything like it started off with Mr. Hunt, I know it's gonna be amazing content every meeting. So just to, you know, not have him wait forever in a day for us to do our business, have him go before we go into our first closed session on the agenda.
You can do that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I said, yeah, that, that's not a problem at all.
No.
And then my second question is, since we've been doing these meetings virtually, we haven't had any real public comment. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're, 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 we are conducting business without public comment. Our city council has been allowing public comment. And now that they've gone to another system of allowing registered speakers to participate virtually during their meeting, how are we gonna start to include the public into our meetings? If there is someone who'd like to speak on an agenda item, they have that opportunity to make their desires known to this board.
Is that, Lauren, is that under you, or Dr. Bracy, or Dean? I mean, I, I mean.
Well, Mr. Parent, really, that's, that's, I mean, we can.
Dr. Bracy?
I said, we can look at that and, and see how we can incorporate that now. Dean and I can have a conversation and see what's the best way to do that. And I know some boards, what they do, they have, as we're doing with the, the hearings for the schools, they email their questions in, and then you address them at that time. So you can have the public comment on the agenda, and you can read the emails that have come in.
Oh.
So that's, that's another method. Otherwise, we've been having people go to IRC and actually speak from there. That way, they can speak.
Uh, I did, I did speak with Deborah White, because I was curious about how they're gonna be moving forward. And this gonna be taking place, their, their next meeting, to actually have the actual speakers. So I just, I don't know whether it'd just be advantageous of us to just not need to reinvent the wheel, just find out what they're doing, and if we can do what they're doing.
Good idea. I mean, we can add public comment to our October agenda, and then, I mean, I don't, I mean, that, the technology Dean would have to, I mean, if they go to IRC like we did one time, somebody went to IRC and, and they made, oh, it was the religious exemption. So they could go.
I, I just want to make sure that we're not gonna continue conducting business without public comment and public input.
Yeah.
How do we do it? I just need us to, you know, really consider that we, we are conducting the people's business, but we're conducting the people's business without the people.
Right, well, we can add that to, we can add public comment to the agenda in October, and then that can be disseminated. And as far as the, the technology and how we do it, Dr. Bracy and Dean, and get together and work that out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, well, I also have a question, since the government has.
Yes, well, I, I also have a question, since the government has raised the, I think the number is 250 in person.
Yeah, we're in phase three.
When will we consider going back to in-person meetings where the public can come out and speak?
Good question. I was going to ask the board before we left tonight, how you felt.
And Chairman Parent, Chairman Parent, that was my question, too.
Yeah, oh, is that, because, I mean, I know a lot of the churches, we've already gone back to in-person meetings and held to the 250. And that was one of my notes to the board tonight, is that, when would you like, would you like to start in October, going back to in-person meetings?
Well.
Well, I mean, for me, I, I think it's a disadvantage to the public when we don't. And if we can do it, and the science and the health department says we can, we can still wear our mask or whatever, and social distance, because we, we, I think the only time we've had more than 250 is when the public hearing for budgets. Though we, we very rarely have that many.
Right.
I would say we, we should at least try it, in my opinion.
I was going to, I was going to bring that up. Mr. Lamb, does that answer? You had your hand up.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I, I agree with Ms. Williams, and really even what Ms. Allen is saying, too, with regards to a lot of this. You know, we've never had to, very rarely, we've ever had 250. In fact, you know, sometimes we have 50 in and of it. But I think the only thing that would probably be the issue would be how we fit as a board, because of the whole six feet, you know, spacing on the DS. That might be an issue, but I think if we can do it in a safe manner, I think we could try.
Well, you know, in April, we, we met at Brighton, I think it was Brighton or Parkview, and we were six feet apart, and we wore a mask. There's no reason why we can't go back to, in doing that. I mean, it doesn't have to be at Brighton, but it could be at, I mean, it could be at any one of the Wilson High School, or, or Norcom, or any of the, any of the schools. Dr. Bracy, can you set that up? Because I think that we need to, I agree with you, I think we need to at least take one baby step, as Ms. Williams was talking about, at least try it. See what October looks like, and see how well it works, and, and go from there.
Sure.
Does any board member have any objections for us having an in-person meeting at the October meeting?
Hey, Chair, Chairman Parent, this is Board Member Akerson.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have no objections to the in-person meeting, but Board Member Allen mentioned earlier about temperature checks. In that case, will we have someone doing temperature checks if we do do in-person meetings?
I mean, it depends on how many people. I mean, we've got thermometers, correct, Dr. Bracy? Do we have thermometers that we can have?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Well, Chairman Parent, not just that, it's, it's, when you go into certain places of business, not only do they do that temperature check, they do the questionnaire as well. So is there a way we can have maybe an iPad at the front, and they answer that questionnaire? You have not been exposed to COVID, you have not tested positive for COVID, mask required, et cetera. So, like I said, I wouldn't have any objection, any objections if those protocols are, are put in place.
Dr. Bracy, is that something that we can, that we can put in place?
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Allen?
Are we looking for this for our first, the work session meeting, or the other actual meeting, meeting in October? And I'm going to share with you my concern moving forward, is that we're going to be in the midst of flu season. There are going to be some people that may want to come out, that may be ill, that may not tell us they're ill. My other concern is, for people who may determine that they do not wish to wear a mask, what will be the protocol then? I think maybe, maybe the baby step is virtually bringing the public in virtually, while we still work through the kinks and give opportunity for to see where we are going to be at in a couple of weeks. Because with flu season, there will be people who are going to say they're not going to wear a mask. How do we enforce that? So the logistics of it, and making sure that we're asking the questionnaire and the temperature checks. And that can take a long time for people to get into the building. And then if someone has a fever, then what? You run into a little bit of HIPAA, HIPAA situation. So I, I just would caution, and again, because I do this every day, and I'm coming in contact with this type of situation every day. It, it, right now, it sounds easy, but you get into the logistics of it, and we're opening up to the public. We don't have the, the luxury or the authority to tell someone they can't come into a public building where we're holding a public meeting. So then we, we expose ourselves, and I, I'm upfront about saying that I have a compromised immune system. So I want to make sure, even with the distancing, someone can determine that they want to sit where they want to sit. And then, what? So I think the, the direction, because our council is not open to, they talked about doing in-person meetings at their last meeting, and then they decided to go this other direction. So I just think, let's not rush it for October. Let's take a moment to see where we are as a city with our COVID, with our COVID rates, and are we going to see a spike when it's flu season, before we expose ourselves and the public to a meeting? But bring them in virtually. That's my two cents.
All right, Mr. Barnes, are you raising your hand, or are you adjusting your, did you raise your hand, or you're adjusting your?
Well, I, I was going to say, I, I agree with what Board Member Allen just said. That's what, if, if that was my, you saw, I'm not sure. I was going to say, I think I agree with what Board Member Allen just said, taking baby steps, bringing the comments, so I would draw my suggestion.
Okay, well, it seems like I'm hearing that we continue as is. I think in Portsmouth, the rate is 9%, and I think that we have to get, be able to get to 5% before we can, we can even think about a hybrid or in-person meeting. So what I'm hearing is that we'll continue to do virtual meetings, but allow, we, I mean, we'll allow for public comment, and we'll let the tech, let Dean and Dr. Bracy and his staff work it out. Ms. Hines, your hands up.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Just two things I want to make, I want to put out there. Number one is, if we bring our kids back to school, I would prefer to come back to a meeting. Because I don't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When and if we get to bring our kids back to school, is when we should at least be meeting in person.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I, I just, I think if we're putting teachers and kids in buildings, then we should be able to sit in a meeting and do what it is that we need to do. And so that's just my caveat. I'm comfortable coming in, I'm comfortable sitting here. I'll do whatever the pleasure of the board is, because we all do need to remain safe, and we need to take as many precautions as we can. But number two, you just said that we have to be below 5% before we can consider reopening. That is not the number I remember from the Health Department. The number I remember from the Health Department is, part of their matrix was looking at 10%. I do remember there was a board member that said they would like it to be under 5, but that was a comment of a board member, not from the Department of Health. And so my question is going to be, next month is October. If we're going to look at questionable bringing students back in, because we did make this virtual learning just for the first nine weeks, and then to be determined later, when is the discussion about to be determined later?
Dr. Bracy, did, did you not have a, did you not have a conversation with the Health Department? And Portsmouth is at 9%, and they would prefer that we be at 5%? Is that, did I not hear you correctly?
Yeah, the latest numbers were, I think, exactly, I think it was 9.3%. And, and I will confirm this in the morning, but I do believe that I heard something about 5% before we could return, before they will be comfortable with us returning.
If you can just clarify that, because I remember, because I asked her specifically that question, what were the numbers that the Health Department was looking at for us to return? I just, because the question is going to be when and if, and how is it going to happen? So if we are through the, if we are doing virtual learning through November 2nd, we have to make the determination within the next meeting or two, what, what past November is going to look like. And so we need to have that discussion again. So when it's going to be on the agenda, and when we'd have that discussion.
Okay. And Ms. Allen?
A great, a great point, Board Member Hines. If we, if the students are not in person, we shouldn't be in person, so that's a great point. Thank you.
Ms. Hines, did you have your hands up, hand, hand up?
No, I'm, I'm good now, thank you.
Ms. Allen, did you have your hand up? Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, at this time.
I have a statement, just want to give a shout out to the, the teachers, the, the staff, all the hard work they're putting in for virtual learning. I had the opportunity to visit West Haven Elementary School and Wilson High School with Dr. Bracy. Both schools had it, had it going on, so I just want to applaud them for the effort they've been putting in. I know it's hard, but the parents just keep bearing with us and allow us to make this perfect for them.
Thank you. All right, Reverend Patello, if you will call us into closed meeting, please.
Oh, thank you. You will have to do it.
Did he leave?
Yes.
I have it in front of me, if you need me to pitch it.
Would you mind reading it then, please?
Sure. I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Discussion concerning the performance of the school board as permitted under subsection A1.
You've heard the motion read. Do we have a second?
Second, Hines.
Hines said second, any discussion?
Mr. Parent, is there any possibility that we add personnel to this and keep Ms. Durin around? Because I do have one question about personnel that I didn't get to ask, or neglected to ask, I'm sorry, Ms. Durin.
That's an attorney question. Mr. Carroll, she wants to add the personnel to that motion.
Yeah, I think you can read it in. I mean, the, the board has the control over the agenda for the evening, so if, if you, if the board's pleasure is to modify the agenda on the fly, you can modify the agenda on the fly. If, I, my answer may actually be different if personnel wasn't already on the agenda, but since it was on earlier, the public noticed that we're speaking about personnel matters. So I'm comfortable saying that we can go in on both personnel and board evaluation.
Thank you.
So is a motion needed to add personnel, or can we just add it?
To change the agenda?
Yes, so do we have to?
To change the motion.
Do I have to rescind the motion?
You need to, you need to move in on both personnel and on the other basis, which is performance of school board.
So I guess pull the other closed session notice up, and then just reread it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, I got it again. All right, so the first motion I'm going to read, and then I'll re, I'm going to read the motion I just read, and then go back and read the other motion.
Correct.
Well, I've already read the first motion, and we already have a second.
Right.
On that motion. So now I'm going to go back and read the original motion.
Well, technically, if we want to follow Robert's rules, then we would need somebody to move to amend the.
Right.
Motion itself. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I move to amend the motion.
Second, Akerson.
All right, motion's been made, and, and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark?
It's Allen.
Yes.
This is Akerson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb. Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Deputed. Reverend Patello's not here. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Now, this, we are now into our closed meeting.
So who, 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 who else do we need to bring into this closed session now?
I was asking about personnel, so I'm assuming that's going to be Ms. Durin and Dr. Bracy?
Okay. And Mr. Carroll? Or no?
Sure, it's, it's dealing with closed session items from previous meetings.
Okay.
All right, let's take the personnel first, and then they can leave, and then we, we take the board evaluation, and then, okay?
Perfect, perfect. So we're going to add those three, and we'll move you into closed session, and then they'll be able to move themselves out of closed session once they're done with that item. Sound good?
Okay.
All right, give us a second, and we'll move you all into closed session. Thank you.
Sarah.
Go ahead and unmute, folks.
We don't let them go.
We got enough for.
We got five.
Go ahead, Ms. Allen.
Sorry, I got some comments before we go, now let me stop.
Okay.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
You got to unmute yourself, Ms. Allen.
No, sir, DeAndre, not today.
There you go.
Okay. I move that each board member certified that to the best of his or her knowledge, only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and which were identified in the motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Second.
There you go, a discussion, hearing, discussion. Let's go around, and who's left? Is Mr. Barnes? Ms. Akerson?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah.
And Board Parent? Yes, 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 we got enough, that's enough.
I'm trying to figure out what I had to say.
We had a closed session, and the last item on the agenda, if anybody has anything else.
Go ahead, Sarah. Yes, Sarah, there you go.
Move for adjournment.
Move for adjournment, please.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody, everybody stay safe, and I just heard the rain. Take care.